Okay, we'll begin with public comment on agenda. Anybody have any public comment? Okay, then I think we have some retirements.
It's always a little awkward which way to stand. So I'll kind of stand in the middle here. So I'd like to call up Barbara Grand first. Come on up. A little information about Barbara Grand, who's actually served 38 years here in the Hampton School District when she was hired back in many years ago by Nancy Andrews as a kindergarten teacher. And even before that, so there we go. She has her bachelor's from Long Island University at CW Post College. She received her Master of Education at Cambridge College. Lifelong learner, attended a number of colleges in the area, taking classes at Notre Dame in Manchester, also classes at Salem State and Fitchburg State in the University of New Hampshire. She has been recognized for providing a nourishing environment and gently guiding her students. She has done a number of committee work, including curriculum works, work on language arts, mathematics, social development, sunshine enrichment, and multi-age study groups. She has participated in the UNH Initiative, which is Play-Based Learning, which is coming around again. She's also participated in training with Mike Anderson, Alice Training, Responsive Classroom Training, Google Classroom. She has focused her recent work on professional learning circles, or PLCs, differentiated instruction, and flexible grouping. She is truly a masterful teacher who has given many years of dedication to our district, and we are honored and privileged to see you at this retirement juncture in your career, and we wish you all the best. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank everyone, the town of Hampton, the school board, the children, and the families.
Yeah.
All right. Next up, Leslie Hartley. Come on up. Leslie has been in our district for 19 years. And at that time, she's been a paraprofessional at Center School. She graduated from Keene State College with her bachelor's in elementary education. Leslie is described as being patient and kind with students. She demonstrates in-depth knowledge of all curriculum concepts at all grade levels. She is an effective communicator. She has great flexibility. She does whatever is asked of her without question. She's a quick learner. Her interactions and relationships with students are incredible, and it was commented time and time again as I was looking through some of your documents and just how wonderful you are with all the students and with the staff. She is a great role model to her students and will be sorely missed by everybody at Center School and in our district, and we want to thank you for your years of service as well.
Thank you very much.
And next, Anne Hagstrom. Come on up. So some little information about Anne. Anne, believe it or not, has been here 18 years as a paraprofessional, which is really, again, is pretty impressive that we are able to retain such great staff. So 18 years is an incredible amount of time, and we certainly appreciated it. She started at Marston School, but then she moved over to Hampton Academy in 2014. She is a graduate of Hessler College with an associate's degree in business administration. She's continued her learning here in our district. She is safety care trained, and she takes advantage of all the professional development opportunities that is available to her. She consistently exceeds our expectations. She works most of the time one-on-one or in small groups. She displays a positive attitude towards the students and interacts with them in a compassionate and respectful manner. She recognizes students' strengths and abilities and works towards fostering student independence, socialization, and building students' self-esteem. She is an excellent communicator and displays great organizational skills. She is a pleasure and a team player, and I know that everyone at Hampton Academy has just thoroughly enjoyed working with you and was a pleasure to read through your file and hear the wonderful things that were also said about you. So thank you very much for your years of service. Anne. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Levine. Appreciate that. Mrs. Hughes. Although Mrs. Hughes has only been in Hampton for five years, she has over 45 years of public service to public education, which is an incredible career and dedication to students and the community. And to end your five years here has just been wonderful for all of us. She was hired, believe it or not, at Center School as an educational associate in special education, and then in 2019, she was named the interim assistant principal here at Hampton Academy. She graduated from Fitchburg State College with her bachelor's degree in early childhood education. She also received her special ed certification from Penn State University. She holds a master's in education and counseling from Northeastern University. Anne, she recently received her leadership certification from the University of New England. Bridgette is truly a lifelong learner, and she has demonstrated that not just with the professional courses and masters and degrees that she's taken, but also in her daily work as she continues to grow as a professional. She'll be remembered mostly for her love of her students, staff, and community, which is evident on a daily basis. We wish you all the best in retirement, and we're appreciative of these last five years.
Just thank you for the opportunity. My staff and my kids know how much I love them, and I'm going to miss everybody. So thank you so much. It's been a great three and a half years. Thank you.
Could we just get a picture of the retirees up here, please? Just real quick before you depart. Bridgette and Bridgette Hartley and Barbara Grand.
Wendy, does she need your help to take? And folks, feel free if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know how exciting it's going to be. Frank.
I'd like to go into non-public session under RSA 91-8 calling 328.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll table my motion until after this.
Thank you very much for that. I'm here. She's hiding on me. I'm here to present two student of the months. One is Dylan Zumba. He couldn't make it tonight because he was trying out for a elite soccer team travel for the summer. So teachers wrote about Dylan that he was nominated from Seven Hampton for his incredible kindness and positivity. Dylan demonstrates perseverance in times when he is facing challenges in school as well as in sports. Dylan is willing to work in any group of students and finds a way to allow each peer to shine. He knows how to take a step back and give others a spotlight, and he humbly accepts the accolades of his peers and teachers when he lets his own light shine. Dylan is an exceptional student and a friend. He embodies all that Hampton Academy hopes for our students. And Sophie, join her, has been such a wonderful addition to the Hampton Academy family. She demonstrates many of the qualities of the Hampton Academy way. She is consistently kind and considerate towards her peers and teachers. She asks questions when she's not sure. She participates enthusiastically in class and strives to always do well. She continues to strive to achieve higher grades in French, working hard and ensuring that she reaches for the most difficult tasks. Her integrated arts teachers want to recognize Sophie for her as a student that stands out and chooses to do the right thing, even when it's difficult. We want to tip our hats off to you, Sophie, for all that you do for Hampton Academy. Keep up the good work. I did ask Sophie to give us a quick reflection of what she really likes about the school and maybe some other things that we need to work on.
So I moved to Hampton at the beginning of last year, so I was named as a seventh grader. And one of the things I really noticed is the difference between my old school and Hampton Academy is how much more inviting the Hampton community is. Not all of the kids in my old school were as nice as the kids are in Hampton, and I think it's just a noticeable difference at like how welcoming the community is.
Okay. Back to Frank. Just if I may. If we, or whoever goes into non-public, I'd prefer to get the principals' reports finished first so then they can leave and we're not holding people up. If that's all right. Does it make a difference?
No.
No?
No.
Anybody, any school board member have anything for their board member update? Anybody have anything? No? Wendy?
I'll do one thing. They did unfortunately have to postpone Party on the Park, the big PTA event. It was supposed to be a couple of weekends ago, but they did just come up with a new date. It's in September, so keep an eye out. That is coming in the fall. September 16th. Thanks, Amber.
We just posted it on Facebook, or we just heard from Erica and Sarah. So we're excited we were able to do that. So we've got a date for the fall.
Okay. Jamie Hayward for Tim Lannan.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. You have a copy of our board report and our newsletter, so I'll go over a couple of things. And if you have any questions, you can just ask me at the end. There's an update for kindergarten enrollment for 23-24. We currently have 91 students enrolled, which is roughly 15 kids per, out of the six classes. So that puts us at a really good place right now. We're anticipating being able to accommodate all the new registrations for the summer. We wrapped up a couple of family events in June. We had a fabulous field day. We got lucky and were able to get it in with the weather. And we had community help from Atlantic Karate, the fire department, the rec department, lots of volunteers from the PTA, parent volunteers, and as well as the staff. And we also had a kindergarten combination music art show, which was fabulous. On May 30th, the second-grade students and their parents visited Marston School. I'm sure Nathan will talk about that. It was a huge turnout. And the next day, the Marston administration and the school counselor came to lunch and met with the students again. And then on June 6th, the second-grade students visited Marston School as well. Plans are in place for the rest of this week and into next week with transition meetings taking place on Monday between the K-3 and elsewhere. As well as plans are in place to utilize the last couple of days for some professional development and giving plenty of opportunities for teachers to close out their rooms. Lastly, we're in the final stages of teachers completing all the assessments, and grades are closing, I believe, tomorrow as we prepare for our final report guard. We want to thank all the parents, teachers, and all of you for a great year. Thank you for your support. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jamie.
Okay.
I could do it now. Yep.
There are a number of donations. These three are from Center School. We have a $650 donation from the Hampton PTA, and we have a $7,500 check from the Hampton PTA, and we have a $40.90 check from Box Tops. These are all for Center School.
I would make a motion that we accept all of these. Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Sadler.
Hello. Hi. So just a couple of quick updates. The last couple of days of school in front of us. Friendly reminder that Field Day was moved to tomorrow. We're hoping for a little bit more favorable weather in the morning than we had today, so that's going to be great. So just make sure students are prepared for that and read everything Ms. Cruz has sent home the last few days. On Thursday, we're going to have our fifth-grade farewell assembly. And that's for fifth-grade students and their parents. Just because of the size of the gym, we can't really accommodate other guests, but just a wonderful chance for us to kind of have some closure on the students and the three years they've been at Marston and bid them a, you know, fond farewell as they head on to Hampton Academy for a middle school. On Friday, we'll have our final school-wide morning meeting in the morning. I know Lane Library will be there to speak, some guests from the Rotary for our Read 100 program. And that's probably the biggest part of it is the recognition of students who have met their milestone of reading over 100 books. And for families who might be new to Hampton, we just had one of our registration nights, but our other one, our registration days. But new student registrations will be held on August 21st, 2023. So you can just contact the main office and get yourself set up if you have a third, fourth, or fifth grader that'll be coming to the schools. And finally, just for parents to be on the lookout for the New Hampshire SAS state assessment. The reports will be sent home on the final day of school. It'll be a hard copy in your child's folder or backpack. So I know a lot comes home the last day, and it can get chaotic, but be on the lookout for those. And if you don't have them, just reach out to the main office and we can print you another copy. Other than that, it's just, you know, the end of the school year, three days is going to be awesome, and we're just looking forward to, you know, what it's going to hold for us.
We do. We have $1,500 from the Rotary Club of Hampton for Read 100. We have $750 from Hampton PTA to be used for Read 100. We have $20.90 from Box Tops for Education to be used for enrichment. And believe it or not, we have two $7,500 checks for a total of $15,000 from Hampton PTA to be used for enrichment.
I'll make a motion that we accept all of those. Second, Andrea. Discussion? All in favor? Any questions for Mr. Sadler?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. You got, no. So you have my report. One thing I'd like to add on to that is prior to writing the, or when I wrote the report, we didn't have the results for the state track meet. So on Tuesday, June 6th, 18 track athletes represented Hampton Academy at the state meet at Manchester Memorial High School. It was a quality meet with the best from the state, and our athletes competed very well. In the girls' 4x100, boys' 4x100, boys' 4x200, were all invited to the state meet and ran really well. The group brought home some medals and ribbons for placing in the top six of the state. Spencer Ziegler, Nathan Dillon, Lola Grody, all made it to the finals of the hurdles. Aiden Pigren brought home the silver medal in shot put, and Derek Finnegan brought home two bronze medals, one for shot put and one for high jump. Congratulations to the boys' 4x200 relay. Victor Colberg, Dylan Zumba, Dylan Mu, and Nathan Dillon, who not only brought home bronze medal, but set a new school record. Thank you to all of the athletes who represented Hampton Academy, not only athletically, but more importantly, in sportsmanship.
Any questions for Ken? Thank you. Yes, we're going to accept all of your checks, Ken.
Yep, there's one for $894 from Read-A-Thon. That was from Mary Saunders. And there's also one for $45.20 for Box Tops for Education.
Is your mic on?
Second.
Is your microphone on?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Dr. De Silva-Napton?
Good evening.
Hi.
Good to see everybody. So let's see, I have a few things to talk about. One of them is my report, which you have. You have my numbers as always. We have grown significantly this year, as you can see. We do still have some kids in process. I know it feels like school is ending, and it is, but we had some meetings this week, and the numbers are the numbers. So many of them are preschool students, so it's not that out of control. But the preschool kids are still, it's very on a rolling basis. So we are processing all our referrals. I also, if you noticed in my pack, behind my report, you'll find that page of numbers that you had asked me to do, Wendy. Ms. Rega, sorry. For the case managers. It was interesting to do this data. I pulled numbers from the October 1 count back from 16-17. So it just shows, as you can see, across the year and then how many IEPs we had in that year, and then what is the average IEP number per case manager. So remember, numbers are numbers. We do have to be very careful. Some students are needier than others, but based on what you had asked for and what the NESDEC report gives us, it shows that the average number, it has stayed relatively, well, between 11.7 and, well, the bottom is 11.8. So it's actually exactly what it was in 2016-17.
So I did want to make one short point, which is that these numbers did come from October. And of course, we have seen our IEP numbers go up significantly this year. If we were to do the same numbers based on your other report, we would be, it looks like we would be at 13.1 right this minute.
So just to keep in mind for next year. No, no, I want to explain because I know that's correct. However, if you look at the 2023 number, 23-24, that is actually the estimate. The 177.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Is the case managers. And then added to that, I have 14 kids on my caseload. And we have a NAC program that has six. So that's 20 kids. So those 20 kids kind of get taken out of this case manager count because I do Sacred Heart charter schools out of district. So that's my caseload, and that's not on here. So it was interesting to do the numbers, and we will be right within the same range even next year with the numbers that we're having. But numbers are numbers, so we do need to be careful, and I'll keep you updated on the needs. Well, thank you for looking at that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Preschool, as you saw the minutes from the task force, I'm just going to quickly touch on this, and then we can, it's just information for you to have, not looking for a discussion, but there is information in your packet. The pre-K task force met. The minutes are pretty clear. There is a piece of paper in here. It's coming up later on the agenda. You can just use it for information, and we can talk about it in August or whatever you'd like me to do. I can come back. But it is a financial decision about preschool and preschool tuition, and we would like board, the task force is asking for board input on that topic. And I did give a one-page kind of description about what we talked about at the pre-K task force, where we did have one board member there. So the board swishes to do whatever you'd like.
Wendy?
I just wanted to give a little shout-out. As I was reading this and I noticed Patrice Baker's name, I just wanted to say, it's been great. I've met her a couple of times through the library, and she's been doing a really great job with outreach, trying to figure out how to get out into the community, how to find the families, find the kids. We're working on a partnership with her for the fall with the library. So just letting everybody know she's doing a great job.
That's great. Yeah, we did talk about what she has planned with you, and it's really exciting.
Yeah.
She's doing a great job reaching our families of kindergarten and below. Thank you.
I think while we have you here, why don't we talk about the pre-K task force tuition?
I can keep it short. I would love to. So you have the one-page document.
Page 51.
And so our vision is to, in collaboration with the community... And so, our vision is to, in collab, in collaboration with community partners, that every 3 and 4-year-old will have access and opportunity to high-quality early learning. So, we were thinking that money may be a barrier to some people, and our goal is to expand our options. So, it did come up, why are we charging tuition? Where does the tuition go? This is something we've talked about before. We did explain all that to the task force. Everybody knows it's, it comes as in as a revenue, and it goes to the town, and the town can do, usually they offset taxes with the revenue, hopefully that's...
Do you, you do realize that in the school budget is all the expenses for the preschool?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, our current preschool is, we talked about that our current preschool is absolutely currently funded by our local budget. The teachers, the supplies, the everything, the school...
But the tuition doesn't, doesn't offset those costs in any way.
But it does go to reimburse some of the costs.
But not directly.
Not do...
It goes to the town, which goes to the taxpayer.
It's the only way that the municipal budget system allows that to be done.
Right, right.
It's the only reason. We cannot give it, we cannot take money from the taxpayers and give it back to the school.
Absolutely.
We have to, we have to operate under the municipal budget law.
Absolutely. And schools are not for profit. We don't, we don't make profits. We, we may have some revenue at some times, and this tuition is a revenue. And it's much like if we had a, there's another source of revenue from special ed, and it's foster care. If we have children in foster care here, other districts pay us to provide special ed. Medicaid, CADD, it's, those are revenue sources, but they all go into the pocket of the town.
Right.
I don't mean a pocket in a bad way. I mean the place where it's held, and then the town does their thing. They take their revenues, they balance it with the budget, and they decide how much of this money are we going to add over here to offset the tax rate.
Right.
So, we did, we did talk about that at the task force. And so, the question is, I had just laid out the four kind of sections. We would, there's a gamut, okay? You charge, you do charge tuition, or you don't charge tuition. We also talked about providing scholarships, and we were going to lay down some criteria for that. We also talked about the possibility of a sliding scale. So, we just were needing some board input into what are your thoughts on the no, no tuition for the community peers, or full tuition, or something in between? Or is mortgage board?
Andrea?
Okay. For discussion, I guess. I'd like to make a motion that we go with the no tuition for the students that are...
Community peers.
Community students. I wasn't quite sure what the term was again.
I'll second.
Second, moved and seconded. Discussion?
Oh, yes. And I'm sure no one is surprised. If you're going to offer 8 students free preschool in Hampton, why aren't you offering 95 students free preschool in Hampton? How are you segregating and differentiating between those students that are here and those students that are not yet registered? And I would say it's discrimination if I was denying a student to apply for the preschool, and I can't get free tuition because your program is full. I think that's discrimination. And I don't feel, if there's free preschool for all, it should be for all. If it's free preschool for 8 or 9, I'm not for that. That's, that's discrimination, and it's not fair.
So, I'm guessing there's no way we could accommodate 95?
Exactly.
Well, not today, for sure, but we have had, we do have 20 slots open. They've been open for a couple of months. We've all, we filled 7.
The problem...
No, go ahead, Ginny.
The problem is, and I've tried to explain this to you before, there are not many people who have settled in Hampton at this time that can afford to have their child in a 2 and 1/2 hour program. You offer no before care, you offer no after care. The present programs that offer preschool for 3, 4, and 5-year-olds, or extend a day for 3, 4, and 5-year-olds are full of full-time students, and they can't take your before and after students. That's why you only have 8 so far, is it's a very limited group that can afford to have their child in a 2 and 1/2 hour program and still live in Hampton. That's the fact right now.
And I, I agree that we are trying to provide a opportunity for preschool programming. That's why we have a 2 and 1/2 hour preschool, and, and only certain people can access that. Absolutely understood.
Yeah.
I don't think 95 people will be available to do 2 and 1/2 hours only 4 days a week.
So, if you have to work for a living, then we're going to discriminate for you and give free preschool to those people that can afford the 2 and 1/2 hours, can afford to have their child in for 2 and 1/2 hours, but you can't do it for those people who can't afford to have 2 and 1/2 hours only for their child. So, that's a discrimination. I'm sorry. The rest of the board can vote for it. I won't vote for it because I feel it's very discriminatory.
Further discussion?
Maybe, could Mariah weigh in on this as our BA?
I'm sorry?
Would you like our BA to weigh in on this as our finance person?
Sure.
I would, Mariah, what are, what are your thoughts as our...
Why don't we table this until we get actual numbers of how much the actual bottom-line cost is? Okay, I think we're going to throw it to you.
I think we know. It's $1,750 a year currently, right?
Well, you're right. So, there's the cost, the, so there isn't a cost of preschool right now, because the local budget funds it all. There is a cost. We can add up the preschool teachers, we can add up the IDA funding, we can add up all the supplies and all the paper. Certainly, there is a cost, but we, as a board, have decided to fund it. We've not decided to, it's, it, we have to legally, there's special ed. It's, right now, it's a special ed preschool funded by the local budget, by law.
Yeah.
We're asking to expand it. This expansion, the small expansion, is not costing us anything more than what we currently have today. Now, if we get 80 people, we're going to have to find some teachers and figure out how to make this happen. The tuition for the community peers has been in place for years. It is $1,750 a year. Not a lot of money. It's a small program, like Ginny said. It's, it's for a certain, certain people who can get their children back and forth. It's only 4 days a week, 2 and 1/2 hours. So, at the 1750, collecting that money, the task force was just simply asking, where does it go? How does it benefit us? And is it a barrier to our mission? And we came up with, it is a barrier, and we thought the board would make that final decision. Now, don't forget, we can offer, or say, we'll do the 1750, and then we can have scholarships. We could have a sliding scale. I mean, those are things we can do. We don't have to just say it's no tuition for everyone. But we, I do feel like we definitely need something else besides pay full tuition or nothing. I mean, we need some in between somewhere.
Mariah?
We would be the only school around the area that would not charge right now. Most of them are charging that are in the local area for this. I have put it in my MS24 as revenue, so I'd have to adjust that next year, and I need to know before I do that. And I, like, we have to do, we estimate almost a year in advance, right, for budgeting? So, I'd have to adjust that. What it does is, it doesn't give us revenue to offset our expenses. I say that it's revenue before we do our budget, expecting to get the money, and if we don't receive the money, our budget has to cover what I, if, the wrong estimate amount. So, it's really, it's, it's so that we're not asking, we're giving that money to the taxpayers prior, so they're not, when we do our budget, we're not going to ask for that because it's a revenue beforehand. Does that make sense? So, usually, it's a wash. Like, I say, we're going to get this much money because we know that it's going to be, say, $1,000 for 8 students, $8,000. So, I'll put that in my revenue, and, and then the money comes in. However, with that said, we spend a lot of time in the office trying to collect the money. A lot of time. Like, making the invoices, trying, like hauling, collections. It's, 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 not everybody pays. It's, it is tedious. For 8 people, it's a lot of, I mean, for 8 students that we, we try to get money for, only 8 students, it's a lot of work. Because it, because they're not paying.
If you have 12 students, it's going to cost you more.
Well, that's my, that is a task force. That's very concerning. I mean, at this point, I, I am the, I'm the collector. I make the phone calls to parents. I say, where's your money? I stand at the door and get the cash. It's a very odd feeling to be a bill collector. But the other thing I would say is the MS24, and we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. There was $5,000 put in the revenue, as a revenue on the MS24 last September, 5,000 for pre-K. We've already brought in 10. You're still not talking about lots, and yes, we, we revenue, we estimate low. We brought in a little bit more. We're not going to owe anymore. That's great. But this, this revenue source is not hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's maybe 10,000, and in the estimate that Mariah's talking about, where she put in $5,000 as, as the revenue source, that's what she, we're talking about. That's not hundreds of thousands. Based on the need for the preschool, how much it costs, is it a barrier? And, and also what Mariah talked about with the finances and the collections, it is going to take a lot of time next year to collect this kind of money from, we already have set, we have, well, there's 10 altogether because 3 are coming back. So, our, we have 10 slots at this point slated for that 1750.
And there is a note in here that Seabrook does not currently charge.
Seabrook does not collect. They, yeah, theirs is free for 4-year-olds. They do free pre-K for 4-year-olds.
Andrea?
Because that's the new program. It's not our friendship program. The whole thing is discriminatory by nature, because parents who cannot get their children to a preschool for 2 and 1/2 hours, 4 mornings a week, they can't. So, what we're trying to do, I feel, is break down some barriers in our ultimate goal to get public pre-K. I, I, I hear your point, Ginny, but either, either one way or the other, it's going to be some sort of, it, it's discriminatory by nature because not everybody can participate. And until everybody can participate, this is one way to make inroads towards getting more kids maybe to come in.
It's a step in the right direction. It's not everything.
Oh, no, no. It's a very small step in, in hopefully the right direction, but it, I feel like it's...
There's one difference, okay? If I offer free, if the Village preschool offers free tuition or, or scholarship tuitions, which we have, we absorb it. We absorb it, we fundraise, we do the things, whatever it takes to get any kid that wants an education won. We've done that for 30 years. You're having the public funds fund the program that you're going to offer free to 8 students. How, that is where the discrimination is different. A private program can do that, and they raise the money, they decide the things. This is taxpayers' money that's playing for a preschool that you guys are going to offer free to 8 children.
I'm not sure why 8 or, I mean, it's, we haven't put a cap on it, Ginny.
I'll give you 15. We can't, we don't have the money this year to hire any more staff. We don't.
Correct, and we wouldn't hire any more staff. We would move into a lottery. If we get 20 kids, it would be a lottery system from 20 forward.
You are asking the taxpayers to pay to give 15 students of your choice free preschool. Everyone else has to figure out their own, wherever they go or whatever they do. So, I don't feel that's fair. I think that's discrimination, and it's because you're using public funds. If you're using private funds, I have no problem. If you're going out and raise that money, have no problem. If you're giving a taxpayer money, I think there's going to be a problem.
And I would say, the room is there, the teachers are there, we're running the program anyway, no matter what. We have space, we should let some people come in and use it.
Lois.
That's what the task force was, that's where they were coming from.
I was just going to ask, have we, did we have to turn away Friendship kids this year?
No, no.
Would you do a computerized...
If you have 50 kids show up, then you're not going to turn them away.
If what?
If you have 50 kids show up hypothetically, then you won't turn them away.
Yeah, you would.
Next year, we have to turn them away because we're not asking for any more funding or any more teachers. We can, we can handle up to 20. At this point, our numbers are going to be capped at 20, because we need to leave some spaces for more special ed move-ins. Based on what we have and the space and the teachers and everything that we currently have, we can handle up to 20 community peers. We have 10.
And what will the 20 cost?
Excuse me? What's it cost?
How much will it cost for the 20 students?
It doesn't cost anything, because we hide, in our local budget, we have our preschool teachers already budgeted, 2 preschool teachers, so it's the cost of the teachers.
We're talking tuition now. We're talking tuition.
Oh, they're not charging tuition.
Well, the tuition is...
There's a cost associated with it.
There, but there's...
Nothing's free. It comes out of somebody's pocket regardless.
But we have a preschool program already in place. It's already here. It, it, we do it.
Yeah, we do.
We run it. You, though, it's in the budget. It's already here. All we're saying is, can we add some more kids to it?
They're saying they have the space.
We have the space. We'd like to add more children to our current special ed programming and turn it into early childhood programming, so we could have a more balanced room of students, who are regular ed peers, special ed peers. I don't want to say it's not costing anything. You, you fund it as a district. You fund preschool for special ed. We have space in the current system, and we'd like to fill it up with community peers. The question is, do we ask those people to pay, or do we not? And it's been a, in a given, or, or do we set up scholarships and other things, which we can certainly do? But it's not costing us anything right now to have these kids come in the room. We don't even feed them snack. I mean, I'm really thinking it. We're inviting them into what we currently have. Does that make sense?
If I may ask a question?
Yes.
This is what we currently have, okay?
Yes.
And we have X number of Friendship kids that we kind of have to take. That's the, one of the big purposes of the program.
Right.
Not Friendship, other kids.
It's okay, community peers is what we're calling them.
Anyway, so right now, at the beginning of the year, if, how, how many Friendship kids do we have? 13?
We will have, at the beginning of next year, we're going to start off with 10 Friendship kids.
Okay, so suppose 25 walked into the building and said, I'd like my child to be in, even paying tuition. How do you, how do you determine who gets in? Because you can't accommodate those 25.
No, we can't.
So, what do you do now?
So, the task force looked at, we would have to set up a lottery system.
Is that what we currently do?
We don't do it because we haven't reached that cap ever. We've never got there.
Okay, but that's kind of a plan.
We would, we would need to move to a lottery until and if this board and the town ever decides that they really want pre-K, free pre-K for everyone, we'd need to hire some more teachers, find a new space, expand our entire preschool, which would be amazing, but it's at a cost. Right now, it's not going to cost anything, because we're doing, we have the space and the teachers and all of those things. But if it gets more than 20, we would definitely, at budget time, be coming to you and saying, hey, we need to find a new space, we need to find more preschool teachers, we've got an abundance of preschool students who want to, you know, who want in. Does that make sense?
Further discussion?
Well, if, if we move forward with the current motion, okay? That means if you get 20 people, we're going to have to fund 20 people.
That's right.
Or if you get 25, we're going to have to fund 25, and she can only handle 20.
She can't. You have to do the lottery system. Number 21 will not be able to come.
That's why I said it's discriminatory by nature, because right now, we can't handle any more than 20.
Do you do electronic, electronic lottery, Lois? Is it electronic, so it's not handpicked?
We certainly can, yes.
I think that would be the best.
So, even though we, though we haven't reached that point...
Right. Right.
What our plan is, right now, if we reach 25 kids, is we'd have a lottery. So already what we're doing is discriminatory, but we haven't reached that point.
Offering it free, we've never offered it free.
So even if you pay, if you get to 21, somebody still is left out. There's nothing you can do. Would you rather have no community peers?
Well, it would be first come, first served.
It come first, come first, serve it. Anyone that wanted to pay could pay. And the 21st person, it's like if they call any other place, you're put on a waitlist. But you're paid.
Okay.
This is, I'm talking about you're giving free preschool to 20 students. What's number 21 who's on the waitlist, whose parents want free preschool, and we don't have room? What do you think they're going to do?
But we're already, we're already charging less. So for instance, if I were to go, my kid went to Village Preschool, I mean, not Village, they went to Sandbox.
You play $50 less than you're playing at Center School.
20 years ago, my kid went to Sandbox Preschool. They went for two and a half hours a day, had a little tiny bit of aftercare. And it costs significantly more than this. And I know at that point in time that there were, I know, families that have not been able to get into the Friendship Program. I have never heard, because they didn't fit well, because it was already full. This was, it just would have been before you were here. And I have never heard anyone say that it was discriminatory. They were basically like, "Wow, I missed out on that. That's a bummer."
It was never offered free. Free brings out a whole different thing.
To make it fair, in the way you're talking about, should we be charging a market rate for it then?
Yes.
This isn't, this isn't a market rate, though?
Oh, yeah? Well, it can be. It depends on what you want for your market rate. You could charge $10, but it's not free.
So basically, you're saying if we charge them, that will keep the numbers down and people won't...
If you want to expand the program, you've got to expand the hours. Because I will say again, there's not enough people in the town of Hampton that can send their child to a two and a half hour program without before and aftercare. They cannot do it. To live in Hampton, you have to make 40 to 50, $60,000. You have to work full-time. That means your children have to be, you and your husband work opposite shifts or your children are in childcare. Childcare right now is the biggest crisis we have in this state. The ability to afford affordable childcare is the biggest thing. And I'm sorry, but that's the biggest crisis we have. And there aren't that many children that can be in a two and a half hour program because unfortunately, their parents have to work. And that's what the problem is right now. And that's why you haven't got more kids than you have right now because we don't have the families that can afford to only do two and a half hours. But if we open it up free, I feel that that's very discriminatory because I have to go over to this school, and I'm a taxpayer in Hampton. I have to go to this school, and I have to pay $1,500 a year. But if I went to the community school, I, free. Well, wait a minute. My taxes are paying for the community school. Kids are going free, and my child's on the list. How's that fair?
But it's only two and a half hours, four mornings a week. That is what's the discriminatory part. You're cutting out the number of people that, whose children will even be eligible to go to this.
I thought that lost that. So I mean, I'm not going to fight that battle again right now. I'll fight it in another day.
In order to open up and expand this program and try to grow our program into, you know, a public pre-K, we've got to do something. And continuing to charge is not going to help us maybe open up a few more spaces. I mean, I don't know. That's just my feeling.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Well, it's not an either/or, I guess is what I would just say. So I think, you know, what you presented to us is it could be either no tuition or it could be full tuition, but it also could be, like everything else we do, where there are scholarships that are available or like we do with a reduced or free lunch. It's the same kind of an idea where it would be on a, it could be on a sliding scale for those that needed a reduction. It could be, it could be a scholarship for those who it was going to be a barrier for. And then the 1750 is really, let's say, nominal, a nominal amount of money for daycare. And, you know, it is a source of revenue that we can collect. And at the end of the year, it helps to offset taxes, and we can give it back to the community. So maybe, maybe it's somewhere in the middle.
Well, I don't oppose the sliding scale or, you know, the, I'm opposed to the free. But if it's a sliding scale and a tuition and scholarships, it's a first come, first served basis, so you're limited on number. When you say free, I think you're just, you're going to maximize the program to some degree, and it's going to cost the taxpayers probably a little bit more money down there.
Well, and it's also going to make taxpayers that can't get their child into the program because they're on the waitlist for the free program.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. You made the motion.
Right, and I just withdrew it. I withdrew my second.
So we're back to square one. Does anybody have another motion or can you?
I would make a motion that you charge $1,750 with the understanding that if they need assistance or you feel they need assistance, because you get help by talking and watching the parents who needs help and who doesn't, and just ask them that we will allow some free and reduced.
I was going to say, what if we utilize a free and reduced form? If they qualify for that, they could qualify for...
Yep, I mean, there is criteria, if you look at the scholarship column. That's the criteria we would use for scholarships. And right now, it's that we wouldn't like make it, we wouldn't advertise it, but we would know it's there. They would have to receive free and reduced lunch. We would have to cap the scholarships at something. Eight was the number we talked about. And then if you get a scholarship, the parents are still responsible for a very small payment, like $5 to $10 a month, just to show that they're still invested.
And while we cap the scholarship at your 1,650 or 1,700?
I just, I didn't get a second for Ginny's motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, and now I have a question. Isn't what you made the motion, what we have?
Yep. Well, no, we haven't had that we would excuse tuition or give them a free or reduced.
Okay, all right.
That's my difference. We're not giving free scholarships to everyone. If you need assistance, then you speak to somebody or one of the staff will speak to you. Because you do know from watching kids who may need help or what parent may be help. And if they need help, you can ask them or help them get it. I'm not opposed to that, but I am opposed to offering free to everyone. That sets a precedent.
Further discussion on Ginny's motion?
My only issue with that is I don't love the idea that we're guessing. I don't love who needs it and who doesn't. That basically, there's a staff person who's trying to think, "Hmm, that kid's shoes look super worn."
No, no.
No, I know, but you know, do you understand what I mean?
I understand what you mean, but anyone that's been in education for a while, by talking to the child, by observing every day, you find out those kids that are struggling. The parents may come in in a high-class vehicle that you don't think they're struggling. I don't care what's going on at home. I, you have to be able to get with the people, sit with, we have the staff that does it. Sit with the people, talk to the parents, go out of your way and say, "Hey, how you doing?" And if, that by that comes need. And that's what you have to do. You have to be with the people and know your parents, know your kids.
You fill out a form?
You fill out the form.
I love the idea of a written criteria.
Yeah, I would say, can I just interject? If we were to go down the scholarship or and/or the sliding fee scale, we'd definitely have written criteria. Now we have a contract, which is great. It's very clear. It tells what happens if you don't pay your tuition. And then we'll add a statement into that contract describing the scholarship and the need. And then we'll give people the criteria when they let us know that they're in need or when we feel like we should let them know that they're in need or that they have something else they can reach out to.
So Ginny's motion, I would characterize it as a small step in moving in the direction that the committee was seeking.
Okay.
Yep.
Are you ready for the question? I'm sorry, Ginny, can you just repeat your motion?
That we would open the community students to paying 1,750 a year unless they qualified under our requirements for a scholarship assistance. And then that could be offered up until a certain point, which you will decide later. But this would give the opportunity, if you did need assistance, you could get it. But if you can pay, then you do pay.
I'll second it.
Okay, and is everyone ready for the question? Okay, all in favor of Ginny's motion? Opposed? 4 to 1?
Okay, thank you guys so much. That's all I have tonight.
All right.
So we've been really busy in the tech department. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. One, when I wrote this report, the U.S. Surgeon General released a statement about social media and the health of our youth. And then on July 7th, the New Hampshire governor signed an executive order about the statewide response to impact of social media platforms on New Hampshire's youth. So it is something that we've been talking about a lot in our district. But with this new executive order, this is going to be something that really hits home for us and is going to be a big topic of conversation. I've already met with Dr. Costa. We're going to be working with the mental health team, our counselors. We're going to be working with our technology staff, our teachers, to try to come up with a plan for how we're going to address this. One big thing that this executive order does state is that everybody plays a part in this. And so it says, "Whereas the imperative that parents, guardians, and all adults responsible for children understand the potential ramifications and consequences of use of social media platforms by children." So there is a big study out there about what's going on with youth. There is a pledge about wait till eighth. You know, having students wait till eighth grade to get a phone to be on those social media platforms. The age for social media platforms is 13, which is most of our students in eighth grade. So it's just something that we just need to be aware of with the executive order. There's going to be more coming down the pipeline with that, so we're staying on top of it. We've always done internet cyber safety, starting down at Center School and working all the way up through. But it's something that we're going to be seeing what the state's recommendations are for what our next steps are. So that's about it. Any questions?
Questions for Amber?
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to make an announcement. We still have some openings for a few full and part-time summer hires at Center, Marston and Hampton Academy. The hours are 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Monday through Fridays, and there is no weekend work. Reach us at (603) 926-4560. We're getting ready, gearing up for our summer projects. We're focusing on the Center School Phase 1 ventilation system. We're preparing for big classroom shuffles in all three buildings. We have a large summer school program, extended school year. I really don't know the appropriate term for that, but there'll be a lot of kids getting great education during the summer at the Marston and Hampton Academy. We're working on the SEU 90 security. Unfortunately, we have to rebid that, so we're going to have to break that into parts because we've got no bidders. I think it's a sign of the times, unfortunately, with labor and that type of thing. So we'll continue to work towards improving the security. I would say this concludes another academic year. And congratulations to all of us for making a successful year for our students. And this all couldn't happen without your support. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Keith?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
So I would talk about debt again. I'm still collecting student balances on meal accounts. We have 140 students that owe a little over $3,300. Parents, we accept cash, check. You can pay by credit card with myschoolbucks.com if you need help with paying off the lunch bills. We have a small scholarship fund. We have donations taken in. But please call me, (603) 926-9826, or email me. Very confidential, 100%. No one will know, except me. But I can't help you if I don't know who you are. I could guess. But if you need some help paying off these student meals accounts, I would be happy, happy to help. Yep, that's what I'm doing. I'm calling, I'm texting, I'm emailing, I'm sending snail mail. I'm sending students home with their owes, paper owes list. I mean, I can only go knocking on doors next, and I really don't have the time.
Any questions for Mary?
The most difficult problem for not paying your bills is to be honest. Be honest. Don't say, "I'm going to be here tomorrow with the check." "Oh, I mean, next week. Oh, I forgot my checkbook. Oh, I'll do..." Be honest. Call Mary, talk to her, tell her what you can pay and make the payment. But it's really tough right now for a lot of families. I know we're noticing a difference in our lunches, and it's tough. So just call and talk to Mary.
Please.
Quick question. Just is the, is that $3,300, is that after the donations that we've received?
No.
Okay.
I'm trying to wait till the last day of school. I don't want to just give it to... Yeah, so we'll have a different number in July.
And we do have two donations that I have that I passed out to you, just so you know, that we'd like to accept. One is for $512 from Michaela Crowley, who had a yard sale lemonade stand. So $512 from Michaela Crowley. And also $150 donation from the Hamlin family. So permission to accept?
I would make a motion that we accept those.
I'll second.
Seconded Wendy. I don't think we need any discussion. All those in favor? 5-0.
Thank you to the community, and this was actually in response to the story from Jim Workman's mom. So really nice, pay it forward, and we're just, we're very grateful.
Thank you, Mary. Frank, I think it's an appropriate time if you want to make that motion.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to finish anything else?
No.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91-A Cohen 3-2.
Seconded? Wendy, seconded Wendy. Roll call? Frank?
Yes.
Wendy? Yes?
Do we need any of them to come back after we're done?
No.
Are you, you're good with everything on the agenda?
Yeah.
Schedules, everything?
Yeah, let them go.
Then they're good to go. You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, let's not...
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to seal the non-public minutes.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
All right, I'd like to also make a motion. I move that Les Shepard resign as chairman of the Hampton School Board due to the fact that he is unable to be objective and impartial in certain matters that have come before the board and towards members of the administration.
If I could just correct you for a minute, I don't think that's worded quite right.
We're not, you're not making a motion for him to resign. You are making a motion to remove him.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to remove you as chairman of the Hampton School Board due to the fact that you are unable to be objective and impartial in certain matters that have come before the board and relationships towards members of the administration.
For a second?
Second.
Seconded Ginny. Discussion? Vote, all in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Go to the chair.
Assistant Chairman, the chair?
All right, or the assistant, whoever. It's not my show.
There's really not a lot in policies about just...
It would seem right that the assistant chair needs to take the chair.
All right, then I'll go to the chair, and then we'll have a vote on chairmanship. All right, I'd like to open the floor to, for nominations for chairmanship.
I'd like to nominate Ginny Brown.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Go to the chair.
Okay.
Do we need to do opposed and abstain just for records or no?
I voted yes.
All right, opposed, abstain. And what about you? Okay. Got it.
Three, three, yes, two abstain.
Three, zero, two.
All right. Continuing on with new business?
Jenny, you should move that mic closer.
Oh, yeah. Amber, you're not here to talk.
We'll move on to new business.
Just point of information, Dr. Costa hasn't given her report.
Oh, that's true. Yep.
Dr. Costa, I'm going to ask you to include new business and your report. How would you want to do?
Okay. In your packet are the schedules for next year. Obviously, those are draft schedules from the principals. We can have an opportunity in July to review them if we have questions, so why don't we hold on to them if it's okay till next month? We will share out the ASCD conference with you in a video so that you can see that as well, and I'm going to just take a moment to run through just a few minor points on my report. And that, just going under our goals, just sharing that obviously this week on Thursday, we have the fifth grade farewell, and that evening at 6 o'clock, we have the eighth grade final assembly for our eighth graders at 6:00 p.m. It'll be in the backyard with our tent. There are a number of policies that I think we need to look at tonight as a first review because we have some time-sensitive things that we must look at before the next meeting. Other than that, I think I want to let you know that we received $52,100 in franchise fees from the town of Hampton to address our technology needs and student programming. I would like to seek permission to accept these funds. Thank you, Wendy.
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you. We talked about some of the other donations. So on the 20th, we will be having a end-of-the-year staff barbecue. And see that also during those final days of school on the 19th and the 20th, our staff will participate in a Stop the Bleed training with Kate Meehan from Hampton Fire and Rescue in addition to transitional meetings with K1, 2, 3, 3, 4, 4, 5, 5, 6, 7, 8 to make sure that there is a transition to the next year. So that will take place. I think most people are aware that we are going to have a summer program where it'll run from July 5th to the 27th. In addition to extended year, there will be a Title I programming. The hours are 8 to 11 for the middle school and 8:30 to 11:30 for our K4 students. The New Hampshire State Assessments will be sent home on the last day. Everyone will get those. We did have a meeting with Demonstrated Success last week, and I was pleased to see that there is a really nice rebound on the scores from pre-COVID, and that's something we'll be able to share with you in, in the meetings ahead. But you'll see that we were all very concerned about the math scores being pretty repressed down in the 40th percentile. They've rebounded nicely to the 60th, 70th percentile. So that was really great to see, grades three through eight. So we can share more about that, but it's definitely moving in the right direction and well above the state averages. It's not exactly where it was pre-COVID, but it's, it's certainly so much better. So that was really good news to see that. And Mariah and I will attend the New Hampshire School Administrators Conference, June 28th to the 30th, to specifically look at student learning, legislation, and safety. And I think that, I think that's it, unless there are specific questions.
Any questions?
The only other thing before I guess I pass it to Mariah, if it's okay, is we have enrollment set up. Enrollment numbers, we're looking at registering students and in the process of doing exit interviews with anyone who's retiring. And all of the leaders of the leadership team did have a summative meeting with a full report that's in their personnel file. So just to let you know that every, everyone on the leadership team did get an end-of-the-year summative that is part of their personnel record. So just wanted to make you aware of that, and I was able to make sure that all end-of-the-year records were done in terms of supervision and evaluation as it relates to walkthroughs, formals, and all part of our teacher effectiveness plan is something that I know that we've been keeping an eye on. Nominations? Okay. So we have a couple of, we have one resignation, and we have a couple of nominations. The first nomination is for Assistant Principal Timothy Westphal, who will be replacing Bridget Hughes, as we know, is retiring at the end of the year, which is in your board packet. I know that Frank's, the Luke is on that committee. If there's comments or otherwise?
No, I find him a strong candidate, replacing Bridget and moving forward, and I'm sure he can assist Ken in the operations of Hampton Academy.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Okay, and then we have Emily Panopoulos, who is going to be returning to Center School. So Nathan Sadler, Elizabeth Henderson had a committee, and they had the opportunity to interview a number of people. I had the opportunity to meet with Nicole Hodgson, who we'd like to nominate this evening, replacing Emily Panopoulos for next year.
All those in favor?
All right, and last but certainly not least, and this was a carry-in, I gave it, I handed it out at the beginning, John Brescher, who gave his resignation back in March, case manager, we would like to replace with Sarah Gay, who we believe will bring some leadership to the case managers at Marston, and would like to nominate her tonight.
All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
And in your packet, last but not least, is that you received a letter from Jen McClellan, who will be resigning at the end of the school year.
Do I have a motion on the resignation of Jennifer McClellan?
I make the motion that we accept her resignation with regret.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
Policies or...
I'd like to make a motion...
Mariah. Wait, Mariah? Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna, on policies, I would like to make a motion that we forego the policies until the next meeting.
We really can't.
We've got something we have to do.
We can't with some of these. We're way behind. We've got many that are piling up at this point that we, I really think we need to take a look at them. I understand it's late, and I know Mariah, you have a policy.
I need at least one for my audit.
Yep, so we do have some that we definitely have to look at.
You can do those first if you want, or you can do me. I'm really quick, so it's up to you guys.
Let's look at the ones we need to look at.
Look at. Well, they're all first reads.
Let's do Mariah's.
Yep.
Report. Let her be done.
Okay. Well, mine's pretty easy. It's the end of the year, and it's the busiest time. We just did our last teacher payroll run last week. We're working on cleaning up all the purchase orders, trying to clean everything up. We have the last payroll next week. I'm working on right now the food service debt. We have a fund balance in food service, but they only let you utilize it for big equipment. So we purchased, I think, one mixer that we really needed with that funds, but that still leaves us with a heavy overage. So I'm trying to work with the state to prove to them that we had 10% increase in food and supplies, so I'm pulling invoices and stuff together to get at least $40,000 to $50,000 of that debt covered by the food service fund balance that was ESAR funds with state for the, when they were doing free and reduced, All Kids Eat Free, we had that fund balance. So I'm working on that. Other than that, I really don't know where we're going to stand. I know that I have revenues that equal, so I will have a fund balance of at least $371,572, which was two revenue sources. One was New Hampshire Retirement, and one was CAT Aid that we have every year. So in August, if we do have a meeting in August, I was kind of hoping we could because I'll be done with my audit by then, if we could have a conversation about my fund balance because we have that 5% retainage. And I think that we should, July, I'll probably have a lot more information for you on both items, but August, I definitely think that we should vote before I do my DWE 25 and give it to the state in September on what, what we want, how we want to handle that. Auditors start tomorrow. They're coming in early to get processes and procedures and that stuff updated, but they will do a full audit the last week of July. I gave you the credit card expense report. I did it at this time last year. It's mostly food service expenses, when they need to run out and get bread, or items that they, it just can't, it's silly, we already did big purchases, or it's items like workshops, transportation for the workshops, hotel rooms for workshops, and that kind of stuff is what's mostly on the credit card. Other than that, it's, if you do see some items, it would be special ed supplies that we don't have vendor for, vendors for set up, and it's just easier to use the credit card. But that is the credit card report. If you have any questions on that or want more detail, we have all back up. We have to have every single invoice and detailed invoice for credit cards. Let's see, what else? Grants are, I had to get all the grants put in to get any money back. So everything's updated to May, so June's will not be in. We'll get the revenue in July, but I post that in, so that'll be all closed up. Most of the grants close in September that are coming due. I have the audit questionnaire, but that doesn't need to be done until the end of July, so if we want to push that off until next month, that's fine. I can, I think that's probably the best idea. And any questions? Yes?
On page five, cable media supplies, that was quite a...
Yes, so that, the check that we got offsets that line.
It will take...
Yep.
Okay. And then there was, well, I guess it's not...
So the media supplies...
New furniture for Marston? That doesn't get taken care of at the beginning of the year?
The what? The new furniture?
New furniture at Marston?
So I, so we, Keith had some extra things. I think they got one desk, and we are slowly getting, we need fire safe, fire safes for special ed, and we're slowly trying to get some at each location because they're so expensive, we're not doing it all at once. But you'll see if we have extra funds here and there.
Yeah, okay, because I see it also for Hampton Academy.
Is that, is that one of those things that Keith kind of saved, gets saved till the end of the year?
Yes, till the end of the year. So you'll see a lot of things creep up now because we held it off all year. And I can give you a breakdown of all that, too, if you want, the July and...
Is there a way, I probably have no right to ask you this because I don't know this, but is there a way to not have this all come at the end of the year?
I wish there was. This is, this has kind of been my gripe for a long time because we really, and I think the, the retainage that we voted on will definitely help that because that's, that was my gripe. It's, because we have no backup if, if something major happens.
Right, okay.
And so he kind of has a habit of holding off, holding, holding off until the end just to make sure we have the funds. And then him and I are like, "I need my invoices. I need my invoices." So, but yeah, the retainage will help because then we'll have that safety net, a case of emergency, and he won't feel that need to hold off as, as long.
And finally, why do we still, why is it still open, the ESAR 2 from 2020, 20, 20 to 21?
Yes, that was a very long grant. That ends this September.
Okay, and we're going to be able to use this money?
Yes, that was the HVAC money to start at Center School, and that project is already in, we are signing off, we signed off with Primex, our insurance company, went to the lawyer, their lawyer, got us insurance coverage all set up, and we just sent it to them today to review with their lawyer, and the project should start as soon as kids get out.
Other questions? Thank you, Mariah. Policies. Which ones, which ones do we need to do, Timothy?
Well, the education and military, we could probably wait on them. They're all first reads. The immunizations of students is required, so that JLCB, JLCF, we could wait on if we so choose. That's a recommended one. It's an eight-page...
Those are first reads, though?
Yeah, I mean, I think you should be able to...
To do first read and then look on them again the next time?
Yeah, so, yeah.
So we're first read through, at KDA, sorry, through BCA. BCA is where the rest of those are discussions. They're not actually, most of those aren't new. That is a variety of things that people have added for discussion.
Maybe the first reads?
If we could go through, let's see.
Would it be better to take each, each one individually?
We could do through KDA. Those are all first reads. We can talk about them tonight if you want, but we can just make them a second read and discuss them next month. And that moves them along in the process?
Okay.
Would be helpful to do that.
Does that work, Jen?
Yep. So who would like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, now we'll get, that moves us down to BCA, School Board Ethics Discussion.
That is a frank. Board Member Ethics and Staff Ethics, if I'm remembering correctly, and Employee Use of Social Networking Sites. Those three were together, this was many months ago that you wanted this brought up, and we have not had a chance to discuss policies since then.
Do you want to discuss that tonight, Frank?
No, that's okay. I would like to discuss the latest one, GBEBA, so it goes out.
Staff Dress Code.
So that's gone out. That's been, so some, I don't know why it's been added, but Staff Dress Code and Student Dress Code have been voted on and are done. I don't know why they're in the pile, to be honest.
Because I asked for it to be brought in.
Okay. We can re, we can reconsider it, but it was, these are our two new policies that we discussed and voted on, and they've been given to the staff.
I, I think we need to readdress it only because when I was here at the building, when we were interviewing, I, I noticed that I believe the, the staff took advantage of that situation a little bit, and I, I think we need to just reinforce the dress code for staff as well as students, all right, that it be, as far as staff is, you know, professional dress is fine, you know, jeans, I have no problem, but I think we should move jeans to Friday now instead of during the whole week because some, I saw some people that looked like they slept them, okay? And students, regarding students, I've noticed that...
For what?
Because of the weather being warm... And students, regarding students, I've noticed that because of the weather being warmer, you know, shorts have been shorter.
Okay. But that, is that a policy issue though, or is that a management issue?
Here, how you address it. You know, if it is, then let the staff address the issue.
Those are two very different things.
All right, well, then let the staff address it.
Management issue, then that is.
So you would make a motion to make, to have the staff address the.
Well, let's say enforce the dress code.
Enforce both dress codes.
Yes.
Okay. You're making the motion to have the staff address and enforce both student dress code and staff dress code.
Correct.
Okay, that's a first. Is anyone seconding that? Andrea's gonna second it.
Discussion?
Discussion.
We have two and a half days of school left.
I know, right?
A little late.
Well, maybe this can be, if they start now, they can, it can go into the fall and they'll be ready to.
Well, I don't have a problem, it's starting in the fall, okay? I have no problem with that because we only have two days.
But you just said.
Yeah. Well, okay, so we will, one of the priorities of the administration should be to enforce the student dress code and staff dress code.
Correct.
And know, realize that they are accountable to enforce that.
Correct.
All those in favor? Hi. Four and five.
It's not like I didn't, they shouldn't enforce it. Just let it be known that if you have two male administrators that you're gonna have to designate.
Correct.
The nurse or guidance counselors to help with that situation.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
They cannot be calling a girl into their office and addressing the length of her skirt.
Do we want to appoint this, we should probably put that in, in the amendment. We should probably make that the motion that.
Okay.
Shouldn't we just, no, no, that's not a policy thing. We, that's, that's administration. We need to, I think we should direct Lois to say, hey, that's something.
I can talk with them.
You should make sure.
They'll need to figure that out. They'll need to figure it out. Yep.
Is there any other one of these, Frank, that you wanted or anyone else wanted?
So when you did the first reads, did that include the investment review?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need.
Up to KDA. We're withdrawing that one. KDA is, KDA is withdrawn by the boards associated.
Question, are you still having policy meetings, Wendy?
We have not been because we haven't been able to go anywhere. We've had this back up here because we haven't had policies. We have actually, we have put on the calendar a monthly policy meeting and I think we haven't met in two months, waiting on these to move through. Yep.
Before you meet again, can you let me know?
We are in theory scheduled to meet Thursday morning.
Yeah.
This Thursday morning.
Actually.
I don't know that we are, but that's the point.
We do have a meeting this Thursday at 8:30 that we can keep or we don't have to keep. There's nothing new because we are a second read with that, but there is, but the next one would be on the 20th of July at 8:30 in the morning. If you want to come to that.
Would you like to serve on that committee, Les?
Oh, yeah, you might want to.
Not particularly.
Do you want to join us?
I'm a ton of fun, man. A ton of fun.
That is the next meeting, July 20th at 8:30 though.
Okay. I'll get in contact with you, Wendy.
Okay, yeah. I don't know, pupil safety and so J I C K, is that on here as a discussion or I think it's on as a discussion?
That's the one that I'll, I'll meet with you.
Okay, perfect. Yep. Okay.
Okay, and any other member of the board that wants to meet on that policy, it's July 20th at 8:30.
So we're skipping this one.
Okay, does that take it up for policies? Okay, we're moving on to minutes and that would be the minutes of May 9th, 2023. Any correct errors or omissions? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll do the non-public meetings of May 3rd, of May 9th, I'm sorry. Any errors or omissions?
And those are sealed if I remember correctly, right?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept.
Wait, I mean, did we seal?
No, these haven't been sealed.
We didn't seal them?
We sealed, I assumed you were sealing that we were voting to seal the minutes of tonight.
Well, we sealed the minutes tonight, but I believe we also sealed those minutes.
I don't think so. Well, I mean, we haven't had, honestly, you should wait until the minutes are in front of you before you vote to seal them anyway. Right? That would be. I would vote if we want them, if you want them to be sealed, it looks like it falls in the parameters, just make a motion to seal them.
I'll make the motion to seal the May 9th.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded and we got a second, okay? All those in favor?
No, you can't.
Now, we would abstain.
May 9th meeting, we were here, weren't we?
Yeah, you were.
Non-public.
It's the May 23rd.
You did participate in the.
We participated in the May 9th meeting so we can vote on that.
I thought we already did.
No, we're doing it.
Oh, okay. So we, what are we doing now, May 9th?
Voting to seal the non-public from May 9th.
Were we here for that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm in favor of that.
Okay. So it's unanimous. Okay, now the May 31st meeting, that was with.
We, we didn't seal them and we can't seal them now, so.
No.
I make a motion to accept them.
Okay, second? All those in favor? Three, two, abstain.
Has somebody requested those?
Okay. Anyone's free to get a copy. All they have to do is contact the SAU office and we will gladly give them a copy of the.
Well, we had a request for those already, so. We've addressed it.
Okay.
Jenny's saying if anybody else.
Anybody else? Any other business to come before us that we know of?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Can we set the date for the next meeting?
The next meeting is July 3rd.
11th.
July 11th.
At what time?
Oh, if we're gonna have the meeting, can we not let, just let the administrators off that night?
Yep. I have no problem with that if everybody agrees.
What's, what was the agreement?
Well, we were gonna try to forego reports.
Yep. So no reports necessary.
Streamline the meeting. I know we have to do your thing that we got to.
Do her thing, we gotta do policies.
Do you want to talk about schedules or we can wait till August?
Wait a minute, there's another thing I forgot. She's in, Dr. Costa's in the motion of hiring.
Yes.
And to offer the programs like we've done in the past. I vote that we give her the authority to go ahead and do it and then we'll just address it like we've done in the past.
All right.
Just, we've done that in the past because we haven't had, excuse me, July meetings. So, so I don't think we need to do that because we're gonna have a meeting in July, right? We're gonna have a meeting.
But you may want to.
Needing to make offers before.
You may want to make an offer before somebody jumps.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask Lois if she wants to make, needs to make any offers.
There might be. We have.
Whatever, whatever people say.
Just so you know, we have four open positions right now, positions that are gonna be hard to fill. We have the library media specialist at Center School. We have a case manager at Marston and they're, they're still looking. And then here, we have the math teacher and we also have a health teacher. So we have four open positions right now.
Just to remind board members, and Wendy, you started to, to read it earlier, the function of the board, okay? And one of the big functions of the board is to hire people.
We, no, of the board is to hire the superintendent. The superintendent hires and fires all other administration, all other personnel.
The superintendent recommends and we.
Approve.
Approve.
But the, the only person that is our employee is the superintendent by law.
Okay. But I'm just saying if, when, and I know we've done it in the past because we haven't had July meetings and we've tried to help, but when we do that, that's a significant portion of our job that we're not doing if we just say, go ahead and hire them.
But I still think that, you know, there are other districts that are gonna be looking to hire as well. And if a person doesn't have a confirmed commitment from our district, yet has one, say from Exeter, you know, that becomes a problematic problem. So I'm just saying it's four weeks.
I appreciate it, but what I can do, if you'd like, is what I did last year was I notified you of the candidate because sometimes you know something that I don't know, right? And I'll say, does anybody have any problems with me nominating, you know, so and so for this position? And if you say yes, then I will wait until the July meeting or the August meeting. If you say no, you're good to go. I can do, I can do it however you'd like, but I think we did that last year too.
Okay. Whatever the board wants.
Then we don't need to make a motion one way or the other.
I'll just notify you. All right. You can let me know if you have concerns. And I can do, we did that with Perez as well, if you recall. So.
So that meeting on the 11th, that's a Tuesday. Is that here? Is it the same time because we're in the summer?
Six o'clock.
All right, then then with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, I was second. I thought you were seconding.
Sure, I was second. Okay. It's been made and seconded to adjourn at 8:30. All those in favor? Everyone have a nice three days left of school and enjoy.